Jeff said we can start now.
Don't throw me under the bus that way.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There being no public hearings or presentations, special presentations or reports, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? Uh-oh.
Bob Bright, 137 West Chicago, Morton. I'm really here to make some comments. When you ask can you remove something for consent, I don't think you allow me to speak. But I'll be asking that D, resolution regarding the release of executive session minutes, when those comes up for discussion, I would appreciate the timeframe and what the topics are that those executive sessions refer to. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment they'd like to make, sir?
I'm Ted Clark, 1001 East Polk, and I spoke two weeks ago about the car wash. And when that's presented to the board, I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being no other public comments, we'll go to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Your honor, I would, I had actually planned to remove item D from the consent agenda for discussion separately.
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
Item D has been removed for discussion.
You pull it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to remove something? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, young man.
Jeff.
Second. Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. Trustee Herman.
Thank you, your honor. I had actually planned to pull this tonight, just because I noticed that it was on the consent agenda. And I would just respectfully ask that historically, we have, before we voted on this, we have one or two of us have reviewed the contents of the minutes in conjunction with our attorney, just to verify that they all should be released at this time and make sure that there are no pending or sensitive issues that have not been resolved or might be an invasion of privacy for an individual employee, et cetera, that would be appropriate for redaction. So I would ask that we hold this off till the next meeting and have a chance to review. And then Mr. Bright's question, these minutes would be from June 30th, 2013, to December 31st, 2013. Every six months we're required to examine the executive session minutes and release those that are appropriate for public information at that time. So if no one else would volunteer, I'll volunteer to review those with the attorney and anyone else that would.
I've read them and I'll simply do it in the attorney if that's okay with the trustees. What we just want to be sure is there's nothing, especially the human resources things, we want to make sure that no one ever gets embarrassed by these.
Do we need a motion?
I would suggest it be in order for motion to table action on that resolution.
Motion to table action.
Second by Steve. Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I only had one thing I wanted to share. I got a letter from the Washington Fire Department, Washington, Illinois Fire Department, thanking us for our help during the tornado. And in particular, they wanted to thank us for all of our volunteers standing by in case of an emergency. And they gave special thanks to our chief, Kelly, who played as he described in an integral role in establishing the command post for the fire department. And they were especially grateful for his experience dealing with FEMA and so forth. So it's pretty nice that not only did we help them, but we were singled out as having done an especially good job. Everyone probably can imagine that we also had a lot of volunteer police and our regular police department and our street department were over there helping as much as they could too. And I'm going to guess that we'll get letters recognizing them too. But everyone in the village just went right over and started helping and I've heard nothing but rave reviews. So everybody in town should be proud of that. Would any trustee like to comment on that? Village clerk.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Administrator.
The only thing on my list tonight is Chief Hilliard put together the overtime and auxiliary police payroll that is expended doing tourism events. And so tonight I will be asking to transfer $15,605.14 from the tourism fund to the general fund to pay for these expenses.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Could you please call a roll?
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman. Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
That's all.
Chief of Police.
Couple things. There's a list of vehicle miles for last year that is in your packet. If you tally up the total, it won't jive with what the cumulative is. That includes vehicles that we drove in and sold off in April of last year. I'm also asking for approval of purchase of three squad cars. I have that information in your packet as well. Two of the vehicles are SUVs, a Ford Interceptor, as well as a Chevy Tahoe. Both of those are on state bids. And then the other one is an Impala, and that would be, that's not on a state bid. A Bob Grimm Chevrolet actually came in $5 under the state bid cost for that.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
All three?
Yes.
Second by Tom. Randy and Tom. Any discussion on these vehicles? Call it.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Corporate counsel.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Director of Public Works.
One item tonight, your honor. In your packets is the Public Works recap for the month of December and also the 2013 annual recap. That's all I have tonight.
Did you want to make some reference to the boil order we recently had? I think people have asked a lot of questions together.
As many of you know, last week ago tomorrow, we had a boil order, a citywide boil order. I just wanted to assure everyone, you guys in the public, that our water supply is safe. I also wanted to reaffirm our commitment to continue to strive to produce, you know, clean, safe, reliable water for all of you. Well, I know a lot of people still want to know why it happened. We're not at that point yet, and I really don't think now's the time to speculate. There's many things that it could have been. We do not know. We've got a very experienced staff in water treatment and water distribution. They're very dedicated to their positions. They're very concerned about this, why it happened. What I can promise is that if we find the cause for the positive coliform test, we'll let you all know, and we'll also let the public know. Yeah, I think that's our duty, and we're not going to compromise anybody's trust with withholding information. So at this point, we don't have that information. If we find it, we'll let you know. But as far as the water being safe, it's safe, and I encourage you to trust us and have confidence in us going forward. This is the first, you know, really boil order, this was citywide, but first boil order really in a long time, many years. So it's kind of unheard of around here, and we'd like to continue that. So we're going to continue to work hard to gain the trust and confidence back that we'll continue to do our jobs. One other item was the delivery of the message. I know we got a lot of feedback on that. Well, I think we did a good job, and we followed appropriate protocol. You know, we continue to look at alternate methods to deliver that message, and we're in the, we've met with the mayor, and we've talked about some of these ways to continue to look at ways to better inform if we can. We think we did a good job. And a couple of those items that I just want to mention, you know, the mayor, in my absence, I was at training last week, but in my absence, he worked with the, our GIS and IT manager to work on the internet. We got a lot of response back that it was tough to navigate through our website. You know, there was peak traffic at this time, so that's, the bandwidth been increased, so that shouldn't be a problem in the future. And there was no cost to the village to increase that. And another thing is the email e-alerts. That's something we added last, you know, over a year ago. I will say I'm happy to let all of you know that it more than doubled after the boil order. So I just wanted to highlight, to go to our website, sign up for that if you want the most up-to-date information straight from my office on stuff like this, or police and fire. We do use that, and that more than doubled as a result of the boil order. So that's a good thing. Unfortunately, on other methods, we got the word out, but I'm not in control of, you know, how the television and those things get that word out. We work on that. We'll continue to call to try to get them to sell our message. But what we are in control of 100% is our e-alerts, and we're going to continue to look at those ways so that we can get you the quickest updated information. That's all I have tonight, your honor.
I think the important thing to remember is that in fact, the water never was bad. It was a failure in the testing process, and our water never was tainted in any way. Planning and zoning, oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, the test that we took was an indicator that there was, it was positive for coliform, which is a common bacteria. That was an indicator. So we quickly followed up with a procedure to get another test. Unfortunately, that test takes 18 to 24 hours to get that done. So we did receive those results approximately 24 hours. So the boiler was about, you know, from noon to noon, from Tuesday to Wednesday. So it was just an indicator that there was, you know, there was positive for coliform. So we're really not sure at this point what the reason was, but we're going to dive in and see if we can find that, and if we can, we'll let all of you know.
Planning and zoning.
Information alive, your honor. If you remember, a couple of months back, we made application to the state of Illinois to expand the boundaries of our enterprise zone, and that was just approved last week. So just to remind you, I laid a copy of that enterprise zone map there, and the pieces that are a little bit darker orange are the eight parcels that were included in this expansion.
Thank you. Any questions from the trustees on that? Trustee Belsley.
Nothing this night, your honor.
Trustee Dobbs.
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Herr.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Trustee Herman.
Thank you, your honor. You have in front of you ordinance 1326, and I just wanted to explain a little bit about why we're doing this. It's basically a preliminary step involving our municipal electric aggregation potential renewal for next summer. Last fall, Wendy and I attended the bid opening, and there was a new twist this year that provided the option for us to select a 50% renewable rate. Our plan of governance stated 100% renewable was what we were, had in our existing plan. But Good Energy advised us that we could choose that 50% option, which would save our citizens a little bit, a slightly lower rate. And, but what we would need to do was just amend our plan of governance anytime prior to our decision on whether we want to proceed with the contract with Home Field. Ameren will not be releasing their electric prices until probably May or June, so it will be at that point then that we will decide whether we want to sign with Home Field again, see how the rates compare. And there is a clause in there that Ameren would be required to match rates if theirs went lower, et cetera. So this is just really a preliminary step to put us in a position to finalize that contract with Home Field Energy next spring slash summer when we know the actual rates. So the Exhibit A in front of you, just basically the only change is it changes the words 100% renewable to 50% renewable. I move approval.
Second. Do I have a second? Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes. The only other item I have tonight is really just informational. I was recently appointed to the Board of the Goyerie Convention Visitors Bureau, and I successfully completed my orientation, and so I just wanted to let everybody know, you've got your first email from me today, similar to what Betsy had done in the past. I will be sending periodic emails out, updates to the board, which I found was helpful for us as board members to monitor the PACBB activities, but also personally to kind of be aware of what is going on in the area of tourism in our region. So I'll be looking for those emails I will forward when I receive them from the PACBB. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kaufman.
Just one item tonight, your honor. I have asked for the first reading of ordinance authorizing raffles. The Raffles Act of the state of Illinois provides that municipalities may have a licensing procedure. There's no hidden agenda here. I've talked to the entire board about this matter of the raffles. Apologize for such late intent on getting the agenda, but things, I've talked to a lot of citizens and parents, and it came where to me really Friday that we needed to take some action. Mainly, my concern right now is the PTOs, they're trying to schedule their raffles with their carnivals, and their purpose is to advance public good and benefit. And I just thought we need to rule on the raffles one way or another. Right now, we just kind of look the other way. I'm not saying that's wrong, but it has been raised, and we've had it out there in the community, the matter of this raffle is probably for 80 days now. So I've taken that time to listen to citizens and parents, and I just think now we need to take a look at that. So I asked Tom Davies to write an ordinance, and I gave him some highlights that I thought should be included. And the main reason I put those highlights in there, so that we could get the discussion started. And I want to thank Tom Davies, our attorney. I thought he did a fine job writing that, especially since that was 11 o'clock Friday to have it ready for tonight's meeting. I'd asked him to put some fees in there and different things, and so what I'd like to do tonight is just have our lawyer counsel read the highlights of that ordinance for the community. Then I look forward to an open discussion, your honor, from the trustees and get public input. And then I would hope in two weeks that we could have a finished copy of what we might like with any additions at that meeting and have a vote. But I look forward to that discussion.
And as to the procedural point, we have moved away from formal first readings as a board. On special request of the board, we have instituted that practice. What I understand is the intent of this is not so much a first reading of every letter of the ordinance, but more a summary of the substantive provisions of the ordinance to foster understanding of its provisions. Unless any board member has a concern about proceeding with that practice, I'd go ahead and just kind of give a rundown of some of the most important substantive provisions of this ordinance. The proposed ordinance 1327 would amend your village code to create a chapter in the village code for the purpose of regulating and controlling the conduct of raffles within the village. There's a definition section which contains important definitions, including definitions for business organization, charitable organization, educational organization, fraternal organization, labor organization, nonprofit, religious organization, and veterans organization. I'll explain those definitions, but the substantive provision seems in my mind to be most important to understand before I work backwards to those definitions. One of the more important substantive provisions of this ordinance is found in Section 3-3-7, which authorizes the issuance of raffle licenses only to bona fide business, charitable, educational, fraternal, labor, religious, and veterans organizations that operate without profit to their members, in which have been in existence continually for a period of five years or more immediately before making application for a license, in which have had during that entire five-year period a bona fide membership engaged in carrying out their objects. Or to a nonprofit fundraising organization that has a licensing authority, that, excuse me, that the licensing authority determines is organized for the sole purpose of providing financial assistance to an identified individual or group of individuals suffering extreme financial hardship as a result of an illness, disability, accident, or disaster. So working backwards, the definitions of each of those different types of organization are set forth specifically, business organization being a voluntary organization composed of individuals or businesses who have joined together to advance the commercial, financial, industrial, and civic interests of a community. Charitable organization is an organization or institution organized and operated to benefit an indefinite number of people that render services that also confer some benefits to the public. Educational organization has a specific definition that talks about systematic instruction in useful branches of learning by methods common to schools and institutions of learning. Fraternal organizations would be an organization of persons having a common interest, primary interest of which is both to promote the welfare of its members, provide assistance to the general public in ways to lessen the burdens of government by caring for those who otherwise would be cared for by government. Labor organization is composed of workers organized with the objective of betterment of the conditions of those engaged in such pursuit in the development of a higher degree of efficiency in their respective occupations. Not profit is organized, operated, or conducted on a not-for-profit basis with no personal profit inerring to anyone as a result of the operation. Religious organization would be a church, congregation, society, or organization founded for the purpose of religious worship. Veterans organization is defined as an organization or association comprised of members of which substantially all are individuals who are veterans or spouses, widows or widowers of veterans, primary purpose of which is to promote the welfare of its members and to provide assistance to the general public in such a way as to confer a public benefit. So those are the particular definitions of the types of organizations that under some conditions would be eligible to apply for and receive a license under your code. The application process would be initiated by an application filed with the chief of police or is designated containing certain information set forth in the code. Your proposed chapter would implement fees. Those fees would be determined by this board. The initial draft proposes a fee of $10 per raffle. Your code also has a requirement that a fidelity bond be given in an amount equal to the aggregate retail value of the prizes to be awarded. And your code has limitations on the maximum amount of prizes. It has limitations on the amount you pay for a ticket or an entry into raffle among its other substantive provisions. So that's a highlight or a kind of flyover of some of the most important substantive provisions. There are others. You have full draft in front of you of ordinance 1327.
Thank you.
Welcome. We thought it was a very good idea to hold this over to the next meeting, as there's a lot of material in here to review. I think the administrator will put this on the internet so people can get a hold of it and read it. All the trustees will be looking forward to people contacting them with their ideas. Even though this isn't to be voted on tonight, I would invite each of the trustees to make some comment. I'll start with Steve, with you, if that's all right.
It is all right. Obviously, this needs to be addressed. I don't think the practice is criminalized at this point. Somebody has a raffle, the chief is not going to show up with the tactical squad and seize the operation, but I think it does need to be addressed, and we don't want to impair the ability of legitimate organizations to do something that furthers the good, the good of the community. I come back to my argument about the logic of saying one form of gambling, and this is gambling, is defined by the state. One form of gambling is somehow inherently good, and another form is inherently bad, or that one directly benefits people in some way, and that the proceeds of another cannot benefit. So I think it needs some debate, but ultimately, we have to have some kind of a provision for raffles and these kinds of activities. And I need to, I got my copy by email about four o'clock, and I need to read it in much more detail than I have so far before I can say anything else.
Randy? Excuse me. Trustee Belsley.
Thank you. Similar to what trustee Newhouse stated, is getting the information late today, I haven't had a chance to thoroughly review it, so I can appreciate the need to hold over and have a first reading tonight and then be able to be in a better position to discuss it at our next meeting. But that said, just a couple of comments. One, and just thumbing through the information and looking at it, one question, I guess, or thought is on the application process, it indicates that the police chief shall provide the application. And I'm wondering, is that something that we can further develop and make a part of this ordinance so it's all known upfront what the application is and takes away some of the guessing or the burden, I guess, of the police department to come up with an application process? And I'm not looking at anything difficult there. I could see this as a one-page form, but I'm just saying, is that something that I could look to Tom or to Pat, to someone that we can further develop that and have that available as well at our next meeting?
And ordinarily, it would be, the way your ordinance is set up is consistent with common practice to allow flexibility for that form, but assistance in creating that form would certainly seem appropriate, not be out of the ordinary, on a provision that the forms stay out of the ordinance, but it could also be considered at the same time as your ordinance.
I'm fine with that. The other thought or comment, and this is actually just picking up on some of the comments in the memo that Tom included with the draft of the ordinance as well, and wondering if we, I think what he shared with us is he had some reservations about a permit fee just because of all the examples he cited. And I can appreciate that. I mean, when you look at the raffles with sporting events, numerous, football, basketball season, the summer programs and things like that as fundraisers, Rotary, I think, was another example he cited. So there's numerous raffles that go on throughout the year, weekly with some instances. And I'm just wondering if, even though on the outset, that $10 permit fee doesn't seem like much, pretty harmless, actually, when you get into some of the quantities that some of the organizations conduct these raffles, that can be impactful for them. So I would be open to lessening that permit fee and would put that out there for discussion as well.
Well, hopefully, all these organizations will weigh in and let us all know what, how it impacts them.
Yeah, okay.
Trustee Dobbs.
Yes, following up on what Randy said, I do see like Washington does have a raffle ordinance, but they do not charge any fees, where some of the other cities contacted do. So I think that's something we need to look at. But I agree with trustee Newhouse that you can't say one form of gambling is good and another one is bad. Like this one, they list better. Like, this one, they list veterans organizations. The other one, we voted down, listed veterans organizations. So, I think we've got to go either one way or the other. I think we have to work a plan and see how this all works together.
Anything else?
Nope.
Trustee here.
Thanks, trustee Kaufman, for putting this together. I am definitely in support of trying to get the organizations that are using raffles for fundraisers the support they need because in the way the law is written in the state of Illinois, the municipality does need to weigh in on that and provide a licensing structure for these places. I am definitely in support of a no license fee and trying to make it easy for these organizations. I think it could be online, could be something that maybe we look at and see if Joe would, you know, could actually approve those, you know, look over the application processes and he could actually approve those at City Hall would be something that I might want to suggest as far as us going through that approval process versus going to the police station, picking up a form. I think going online would probably be the right thing to do. Also, obviously, we have a little bit of history here with the very contentious vote that we had. I am, I can't say strongly enough that I'm in favor, or I'm in favor of a comprehensive look at this. I just want to point out some things. If people are debating whether this is gambling or not, I would like to ask questions like, why do we limit the prize money? Why is the prize, why would we ever put a limitation on that? Why do we actually need to put a limit on the maximum price that a ticket could actually be sold for? Why do we need to lay out that a person of 18 years or younger cannot participate unless their guardian has actually given them, is actually with them, accompanied by them? So, these are some questions for me that I struggle with, you know, why this can't be, why this can't be parallel and actually all in support, you know, in one comprehensive plan. I think that's what we need to look at. Now, that's just, again, that's just my opinion of where I'm at, but I do want to provide the support for the PTOs and the fraternal organizations, especially the veterans organizations for this. So, I do see the need to act on it, but at the same time, I don't want to not sit here and point out the potential discrepancy of what we're dealing with and the logic or not logic that's potentially involved with that. My two cents.
Trustee Herman.
Thank you, your honor. I definitely support the codification of a raffle act here in Morton so that we can be in compliance with state law. The raffles encourage civic participation and we, I would want to give our schools and our nonprofits the tools that they need to be operating within the law to improve our community quality of life. And I thank trustee Kaufman for bringing this forward. I was in Florida last week, so I understand that the issue came about because of the school carnivals and I appreciate your leadership on this.
No problem. Thank you.
Appreciate all your comments. It was inevitable that there would be comparisons made between this and the recent video gambling discussions, but I would point out that even the state of Illinois differentiates when they rather happily allow gambling in the water but don't allow it on the land. There's always going to be a differentiation. Unfortunately, the world is not black or white and we have to make some decisions as a group, which we will do hopefully at the next meeting. Trustee Newhouse. Two items tonight, your honor, and I'm going to reverse them so that our applicants for the zoning review can be excused from sitting through the longer discussion about mixed use zoning. You've got on the table, the material was presented the last time, which Mr. Clark, on behalf of his clients, asked the village board to consider directing the plan commission to do a review of B2 zoning to include car washes as a special use. And at that time, I stated that usually when we do a review of that type, there is a compelling reason, a typically correct wrong that we've identified, an error, or some issues benefit to the village. Not that individual business actions cannot be beneficial, but it's usually something of that nature. And I made the statement at the time that, based on the supposition of a compelling reason and some other zoning issues, that I didn't feel that I could recommend it. I will, as I said, if it's the consensus of the board of trustees to take it to the plan commission, I will dutifully do so. But, the objective tonight, I believe, is to get consensus from the trustees on whether or not they wish that to occur.
Well, unless there are some questions, could we have a show of hands of those who would like this to be forwarded to the zoning board for review so that we can consider what the zoning board determines? Show of hands of those who would like to send it forward.
Would this go to the plan?
One, two, three.
I'd like to send it to the zoning.
Four, that's enough, I think.
Yeah, plan commission.
Yeah.
Trustee Newhouse, if you would, ask the zoning board to.
I shall do so.
Thank you.
Okay. The other issue tonight is the further discussion of the mixed-use zoning proposal. We've all had a chance to look at that. It is kind of tough going for folks that don't do it every day. And so, to kind of help with the process, I've asked Justin Farrell, who chairs the committee on the plan commission on mixed use, to present to us this evening. I'll ask him to join us now. Would also point out that as he discusses this, the material, some of the supporting material and much of the work that was done with this, really is a culmination of work by the plan commission and the downtown, or the business development district and the economic development council. So, people who have various levels of expertise or responsibility have entered into this and what you're going to hear now is where that has gotten us. The objective for the trustees is to determine whether or not we want more work done, we think this is something we can act on, kind of direction to the plan commission on where to go from here, not necessarily a vote of approval at this point. So, if you would, Mr. Farrell, please, and I'm going to ask Mr. Spangler also to be available as we have some discussion on this.
I'd rather swap this around and talk about gambling some more. It's pretty exciting. What we did here is formed a subcommittee within the plan commission to discuss specifically mixed use and how, moving forward, it can potentially revitalize some of our downtown environment. There has been the specter of development kind of fluttering about some people who have interest, but more than that, we're starting to see, come before us, a few mixed-use actions. And so, because of that, we decided it's probably better to try to make something more comprehensive, something that we can even dangle out there and maybe incentivize or catalyze some development in the environment, in the area. What we did in the plan commission is sort of looked at a couple of communities, test communities, if you will, that have done this. And these communities were similar in size, similar in demographic. I think that was important. Regionally, we tried to keep it within areas like us. I mean, it's obvious to see that mixed use is very easy when you go somewhere where it's breezy and beautiful next to the ocean, but how does it affect a community such as Morton that has some weather like we're having right now? So, what we did is we discussed a lot of different variations. We looked at a lot of different places and how they implemented it, and then we kind of tried to come up with something that works, we think, for us. But, as Mr. Newhouse said, this is not here for approval. We did this a little bit different than normal because this is such a dramatic change from our typical densities and the way we typically handle ordinances. I really want your feedback. The plan commission is looking for specific feedback from some of you, things that you either want discussed further, things you want added or brought out. We're not asking you to be ad hoc, plan commission members. What we're asking for is just a little preview on this because this is a big change, as I said. I apologize, I'm still fighting a cold. Tom, you know, Dob was careful to point out that I missed the dinner on Saturday night, but I really was sick, I promise. What I'll do is I'll go through some of this stuff here just with the, what was going to be a presentation. We've had some technical difficulties. Roger didn't want to show you the pretty pictures I put together. So, we'll just kind of go through the paperwork in front of you. The opening area here, why mixed use, I'm going to blaze through some of this because I know we've had a long meeting, but the idea here is we've got this great downtown. We seem to have sort of a mix of office. We're starting to see some retail. We're starting to see some restaurants. We have heard from people that they would like to have high-end apartments, condominiums, things like that in a downtown environment. The recent bicycle trails have been put in. We're starting to see green, efficient modes of transportation utilize people that want to work, live, eat, and shop within the same radium. So, mixed use is really the kind of way to attend to that. And village-style buildings and setup with a main street and two to three crossroads are typically how you see this work out best. We see it as a way to enhance the area's identity. It's something of a calling card to communities that have done this and done it right. You know, I think when you see this effectively put into play, you start to see that demographic that we have a hard time attracting, frankly, come and want to be here. We also are going to see people who are either downsizing or people who want to stay in Morton but don't have this kind of alternative that are currently moving to other areas. Downtown Peoria, the 401 Water Street building, a lot of that is made up of former Morton residents, Caterpillar employees. So, there is some, I think there's some need here that we could probably pinpoint. It also encourages economic investment. Anytime we can do that, I think in our own community, that's a positive. When we started to look at this ordinance, we really tried to weigh, how involved does the ordinance want to be in restrictions? But, how open do we want to leave it to potential incentives for development? That's always a tricky thing, especially when you're the first guy on the block. This is the first time we've put this out there, so we want to get some interest. We want to try to bring somebody in to look at it. We don't want to make it so restrictive that it's expense and it makes everybody nervous and they walk away. On the other hand, we don't want to get rid of our brand as we've come to know it. Morton is certainly something that we hold dear, and I think it's important that the type of investor or developer we bring in understands that and tries to develop around that. So, we've come up with more flexible design standards, less green space requirements, less parking requirements, higher density and smaller lot minimums, which is sort of the reverse of what we typically look at in the plan commission, but in order for these to work, density is important. The built-in restrictions are there. You know, I will talk about one of the built-in restrictions specifically, and that is the developer itself. When you attract a developer to something like this, you're talking about a substantial investment on their behalf. This is privately funded development. Money's hard to come by. Capital, you know, people are not getting loans like they used to. Development's not taking place as it used to. So, by nature of that, there's going to be some protection there. The developer's not going to come into a town and build a mixed use that doesn't make sense. He's going to make sure there's enough parking so that it's viable. He's going to make sure that he's done the right things with the way that space is utilized to attract core tenants long before he starts building. So, a lot of that stuff's going to be built in. A lot of protections that we would require are sort of inherent to the risk that a developer would take. That said, we have, at least for now, restricted all mixed use as special use. So, it will always come before the plan commission, and we will have an opportunity to review the plan in detail at that time. Mixed-use design, we talked here a little bit about the things that you come to know with mixed use. There's a balance of uses, the first floor, it's typically going to be your retail, your restaurant, in some instances, office, but it's always going to try and promote street frontage, which is going to be reserved for those retail and restaurant to make sure that they're vibrant. Sidewalks, pathways, landscaping, and parking will always encourage connectivity between uses. Again, interconnectivity is the key to these things. And they're compact. The density is high because we try to put a lot in a small area, and that's one of the major changes that mixed use will bring to our downtown environment. The next page here talks about the planning review regarding overlay districts and underlying zone changes. This was obvious. I put it in here just so you guys understood why, but in your package, you will see the proposed overlay map. We chose an overlay map purposefully because there are, as you'll see in here, a number of individual zonings between B2, some industrial, some B3, even some higher-density R3 residential in the top portion. So, instead of going in and literally trying to adjust or adapt each of these various ordinance, or zones with some sort of a mixed use, we decided we'd put an overlay map over the top. Everything underneath that can fit into this as long as you take a real close look at the ordinance. Thereby, an area that's currently industrial, maybe five years from now isn't looking so great, a developer could potentially come in and say, you know what? That's in the mixed use overlay map. We're going to knock it down. We're going to start over. We're going to build something beautiful here, and we don't have to go through each and every one of those lots and figure out what the current zoning is and get it redone and go before the plan commission eight and nine times. So, it's sort of, I think, a smart system to use. And by the way, overlay maps are becoming, as you probably all have seen, they're becoming sort of the norm. Next page, you will see some examples from Mount Prospect. This was brought to my attention by Mr. Newhouse. These are some good examples of what we're talking about here. I know most of you have seen some of this stuff in the past or have gone to places where you've seen these types of communities, but you've got retail, restaurant on the main floor, and here you're showing two levels of medium to high-end residential above it. This is exactly the kind of use we're talking about. The next several pages are the proposed language, and I assure the attorney, we're not doing a first read, we're just reviewing potential language. The purpose of this is, of course, as we just discussed, to create an overlay district that revitalizes our downtown environment and the community around it. As far as permitted uses, when we look at 1015-2, I want to go through these real quick with everybody. Permitted uses, as we have written this, are all B1 and special use 3. Special use 3 under B1 is there as churches and monasteries. We're also permitting most of B2 with the following exceptions, 22, 31, 40, and 44. Laundry mats and dry cleaning, post offices, outdoor demonstrations and exhibitions, and printing and publishing of a certain number. Part of the reasons those have been removed is quite simply because of some of the examples as I read through a lot of history from other people doing this. These were things that were not conducive to the mixed use. Post offices created a lot of traffic, a lot of in-and-out. Again, we're trying to be careful with that because the hope here is people are walking around and using, you know, these places. They're walking to the place you're going to shop. Having a lot of in-and-out traffic is trouble, is problematic. Laundry mats and dry cleaning, I think that was more of an issue of just environmental, you know, they're loud, they're loud at night, they're not great when you have residential above them. Temporary outdoor demonstrations, exhibitions of merchandise primarily for outdoor use. This does not restrict retail sales or people putting retail out for sale in front of their business. This is businesses under the B2 that are specifically selling outdoor equipment, things like we're seeing adjacent to our farm and fleet building. Printing and publishing having not more than 15 employees other than office and maintenance employees. Again, printing and publishing, it kind of goes hand in hand with loudness and noise and all these things that are sort of not conducive to residential. So, those have been excluded right off the bat. Special use 13 and B2 is allowed, of course, restaurants, taverns, similar establishments serving alcoholic liquors with outdoor eating, drinking, and seating. That's an important one. Part of making something vibrant is making it look exciting and making it look inviting. Every single one of these communities that had a success model had great restaurants and most of them had outdoor seating seasonally. Most of them, you know, that was part of the charm and that was also part of the anchor. You landed that great restaurant, all of a sudden, you started to see the other spaces fill up. People wanted to be a part of it. The next page talks about special use. As we've mentioned, all of these will be special use coordinated with the permitted uses for the time being. We can change this. Eventually, we can decide years from now, two or three of these down, and we feel very comfortable and confident with the language we come up with. We can amend this ordinance and we can stop them from being special use. I don't want to make you feel like we have to lock these in as a special use and we have to see them every time, but in the beginning, I'd like us to. I'd like to tread carefully as we move forward and make sure that both site approval from the city as well as the plan commission has an opportunity to review these plans and comment on them specifically to make sure that they're fitting the goals that we're setting forth here. Mixed-use residential on the next page, 1015-4. Residential uses will be on second floor or additional floors provided that the first floor is retail and office. Residential uses on the main floor, provided 60% of the main floor is used for retail, office, or service, and the residential space is a minimum of 800 square foot. All-street building frontage will be devoted to that retail component whenever possible. This is for vibrancy. Again, we use that word a lot, but you have to make this look like it's a cool place to be. I mean, that's a silly way to put it, but that's the only way they're successful. I mean, that's a silly way to put it, but that's the only way they're successful. These things have to sort of sell themselves. Residential works above and in some cases on the main floor, but never in front. You want the front to be restricted to retail. You want to make it the place to be. Special conditions, there should be no outside storage of goods, materials, or products. Again, this doesn't prohibit the display of merchandise for sale. Drive-throughs are prohibited except for banking facilities. Banking facilities are left in there for one reason and one reason only. They're generally your core tenant. They make up the corner. They make a great 10- or 15-year investment in the building, and for a developer, that's the first one they want to land. How they work with the rest of the development is part of site review, is part of the Plan Commission, to make sure that where that drive-through is set up and how it's set up is appropriate based on the rest of the use. All building permit applications are subject to site plan, which we'll talk about a little bit later. All provisions in the zoning code apply unless there's a specific provision in this chapter to the contrary. General requirements on lot coverage, this is a big change from our standard, you know, coverages, and part of that's because, again, we're trying to promote density, which is a hard thing to talk about coming from the Plan Commission where I'm trying to protect people's lot sizes. But the reality here is that the more densities are, the more successful they are. So the minimum lot area per dwelling shall be 1,000 square feet for the mixed use and 1,500 for all other. Zero lot line minimums and no greater than 10 on the front. Zero lot line minimum, no greater than 12 on the side, and a rear of 10 feet minimum. Now, the reason we have no greater thams on the front and side is a good example of this. Think of Peoria Heights. You've got a nice walkway in the front of the business. You've got some areas where they have a little bit of side, but they're all packed together. They're ready to go, one after the other. You go have dessert at one, you meet your friends at the next, and you park down the street. These are the ways these things work. If you start to add room in between these buildings or in front of the buildings, it will, first of all, it'll make it real hard to make it look like they all belong. I mean, part of this is to create some uniformity. But the other thing is, part of that development, we've got to make sure that they're able to get as much space as they possibly can useful, and that's not going to happen when we've got all these large maximums. The rear, we did leave a 10-foot minimum, and that's because we obviously have to have places for trash pickup. We have to have places for deliveries and things like that to get in and out. Height, we left, we actually increased height just a touch, no greater than three stories or 40 feet. The reason we did that is to allow for some aesthetic changes to the building. Most of them run right at 38 to 42, so we figured meeting in the middle was probably a good way to go for our first swing at this. Green space, one of the primary aspects of mixed use zoning is to allow greater density, emphasizing existing community positives, walking, bicycling, et cetera. Mixed use overlay, if you're asking for it, you have a zero green space requirement for your development. That does not say that you don't need to do the landscaping requirements. All the current requirements in the zoning are still there. It just means you do not have to set aside green space for your development. And again, this, you know, we look at the success models, that's what they've done. Building materials. Mr. Newhouse will talk on this a little bit, but what I decided to do on a couple of these signs and building materials were two areas where when we looked at it, we didn't really need to rebuild this from scratch, I didn't think. There was a terrific amount of work put into the facade grant language by the Business District and a number of other people, I think the Chamber. There were a lot of people that worked on it, and Mr. Newhouse will speak to that. But the language I have included in your packets, if you haven't reviewed it in a while, it's pretty exhaustive. It's pretty good. It creates a uniformity with the businesses that we're already trying to incentivize to redo the front of their buildings all throughout Morton. So I think it's important that any new development that potentially comes to town tries to adhere to a similar code. It'll create, I think it'll emphasize part of that unique place to go. You know, Morton will start to look kind of neat if everything sort of follows the same footprint. That's not to say that we can't discuss building materials and how to handle that moving forward. I know that there's been a lot of conversation from developers on, well, what do I need to have to build this building, or what does it need to look like, or do we have specific types of materials? And of course, I point them to the code book, but I think for this instance, right now, sitting with what the facade grant people put together is a pretty good way to go. Street level transparency, this goes back to what we're talking about, that street level is important for retail and restaurants, so we want to emphasize that. 35% minimum must be transparent on that street level. That allows for pedestrian traffic through in daylight inside. Upper levels facing the street are encouraged to maximize windows wherever possible. I looked at a couple of places that did tell them exactly how much, how many windows, how, where, how often. I don't know if we want to get that involved. So instead, we just want to maximize windows wherever possible. Again, this sits in front of us before it gets approved, so we'll have an option to look at that. Sign regulation, we're using the sign regulation that's already there, 1096 in our code book. It's within the Business District. It's very, very good. Parking here, we're trying to encourage less vehicles, less driving, more walking. So what we've done here is we've allowed the continuation of no minimums for parking. Unless you're a mixed use, you do have to provide one parking spot, a ratio of one-to-one, I should say, for each residential unit offered in your development. So if you build a building and you have 25 apartments, you have a bare minimum requirement of 25 parking spaces you have to provide, and the developer will have to keep that in mind when he's going through site, when he's talking to the city about layout. Anything above that, as far as the businesses themselves, is not to be provided by the developer, at least not inherently by this ordinance. Now, that goes back to that first thing we talked about. No developer is going to put $20 million into an investment and not provide parking for his potential businesses. So I think there's some policing therein, but we've only provided it as a necessity for the residential portion. The final portion of this, which you may or may not have, I don't recall. Roger, will you hit that slide for me? Okay. The things that we have to discuss further regarding the city itself, I know Craig and I had a meeting regarding water retention, detention. There are going to be things that come up, and what I ask from you guys as you dig into this, where I was uncomfortable as a plan member, was really trying to dig in so deep that I also became a site planner and a, you know, a designer and an engineer and an architect. And, you know, anybody who's sat on this in that Plan Commission before, you recognize when you're building an ordinance from the ground up, you can get that involved. It's a Pandora's Box. So you have to decide when to say when, and I think we have a pretty excellent site review here in Morton as far as when I bring in developers as a Realtor. I think that that same method can be utilized here, and I think the positive of that is that there's some willingness to work on both sides. You know, there's an option, there's an opportunity to bring a developer in and say, you know, what can you propose? And then we'll review it. If we stick it in this ordinance, there's not a lot of opportunity for that. So we want to be a little careful, I think, how much we dig in deep. So that's my bangout.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Just a couple of thoughts. There are Morton property owners and developers who are interested in proceeding. One of the models that's been talked about by a number of people is, you know, why don't we do something like Peoria Heights, as Mr. Farrell mentioned? What we're looking for at this point, I think, is questions and comments from the Village Board, and maybe the easiest way to do it is, you probably may have some tonight, but maybe by the next meeting, everybody could have a chance to kind of look through this, think about what was said, and if we can sort of consolidate our guidance, then we can go back to the Plan Commission and get to the next step. Originally thought this thing was going to be pretty easy to do, and as it's turned out, lots of questions have come up, and to do it right has taken longer than those of us who started out with it anticipated. So I, there's a little time yet to be spent as our direction gets integrated and we come up with something that we can actually vote on. So at this point, I'd just ask for any comment that anybody has tonight.
Yeah, first of all, thanks, Justin, for the comments tonight, and obviously, it's, you know, it's very clear the Plan Commission put a lot of work, did a lot of homework on this. I appreciate that. Assuming, and it looks like it falls in line with Hansel Levine, the plan that was done a couple of years ago, so we're not recreating anything. We're really complimenting what was already done. The foundation's been laid and sort of, this is the next phase to it in terms of providing direction.
A little bit, yeah. I will speak to that. I purposefully, while I reviewed that, I purposefully steered clear of it when creating this, mostly because I wanted to look at it from a perspective of a Plan Commission member creating an ordinance for his community as opposed to a potential engineer or developer, and I built it with that direction. And you're right, it did kind of house a lot of the same things, but, you know, we did it independently, I guess is probably the way to put it.
The other thing, I noticed that when you're talking about lot coverage and setbacks and positioning of the structures, things like that, it doesn't say that in here, but I'm assuming, I mean, in order for access and servicing those buildings and infrastructure and all this, we're, it's a development of an alleyway system behind these buildings and the development that goes on, and not necessarily public streets or things like that. Is that sort of the assumption?
Well, you know, the way that we'll look at this, and that goes back to part of the city, the site, how the site is set up. The setbacks allow for, you know, the universal collection of garbage and things like that, but no, we did not specifically state how those egresses-ingresses will be handled. You know, again, if a developer's looking at a parcel, he's going to have to factor in, how is that functional? And not just because he wants it, but because it's going to get ix-nayed by the city as soon as he sits down with Craig and Roger and starts looking through site. So a lot of the logistics of how a building is serviced in that way is typically handled on the site review. The ordinance gives enough to provide, you know, how we want it to look, how we want it to feel, where we want it to be, but when it starts to get into the logistics of how the building is serviced, we try to leave that to the city. And again, unless you guys prefer it be in there. We're not adverse. I mean, that's the reason why we're giving this to you guys. We want the input. We want to know how much you want in this thing. But also understand that as soon as we start to put language specific to that in an ordinance, we have to be very careful because not every piece of, you know, as you know, not every site is the same. So it's, what, 10 feet plus 15 might work here, 10 plus 3 might work somewhere else. It becomes sort of a Pandora's Box. So we tried to create something that at least gave them a minimum level to get started, and then they would have to sit with the city and actually make it work.
I'd have to agree. I think the site review would cover that, and concerning alleys where you would think the city would take over alleys. If an investor's going to come in and do something, Craig's going to ask them, how are you getting rid of the garbage? Fire, police, they're going to look at all those things. The city is not going to take on a lot of blacktop with alleys, so they're going to either have to have a cul-de-sac, some way of doing it, their own blacktop, because we have a city code where you can't back semis out on, you can't build a new building and back semis out onto roads. You have to drive out. You can't block traffic. So I think our city codes and site review will cover those issues with the developer, but I do think we have to give the builders a chance to meet that site review, and I think we have enough ordinances on the books to probably cover those, or I would at least say, first time or two out, I think we'd win the battle, and we'd learn real quick what else we want to add. By the law of the state of Illinois, we can add any ordinance we want at any time. So I think we have that power. So I feel very comfortable with what you've done, and thank you.
Of course, you will.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I noticed your examples here at Mount Prospect, and that is very attractive. That's a nice-looking one. Neal Street in Champaign did something very similar.
You bet.
But we have some things that have gotten out of hand now that nowhere compare to buildings that are downtown look anywhere near these.
I agree.
Some do, but some don't.
I agree.
Is there any way to force them to change?
No. I mean, potentially, but I don't know if it's in our power, you know?
Unless somebody built new and they felt theirs looked so shabby that they'd have to keep up.
Yeah. I think incentivization is what we've done with the facade grant, and I think that's probably the best way to try to get existing businesses to continue to upgrade or invest in their building. You incentivize the business. If you penalize them, you know, times are tough as is. I think you have a hard time getting someone to put a lot of money into the front of their building if they're struggling to make their mortgage. But the facade grant was a really good first step, and I think that as Morton business owners start to see these things, they start to see these new businesses put money into the front, maybe they see a new development, you'll start to see some of that come, you know, come through. I also think that a successful mixed use will sort of have that effect. It'll bring money into the environment, into the economy, you know? Hopefully, it'll start to make some of these other businesses more money. And so that's kind of the commitment we're trying to make to these guys is, we want to have, moving forward, some uniformity in how your building is going to look in a new development. Understand, some things might not be a brand-new development. We might have, you know, we've got a lot of buildings downtown right now that will fit into this area, that somebody might say, look, I want to make this a mixed use. I've got offices on floors 2 and 3, and I'm going to rebuild them into duplexes or condos. You know, at that time, one of our considerations is, are we going to force them to remedy the building and bring it up to the facade grant code, or are we going to allow them to just update the building itself and leave the aesthetics outside alone?
So we have that authority to be able to do that?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, currently, we're not going to force them to come forward necessarily, but it's something we should talk about, how we want to handle it. And that goes back to that incentives, that balance of incentivizing development and restricting development. You know, as a Plan Commission board member, I say that being careful is probably the best, and you don't have to put it down. I mean, we're going to have an option to see each of these things before they go to fruition, and we're going to see them many times. So I think that, you know, I'd love to see every building down there look like that, but it'll be a while. I think it'll be a long while. I'm happy, quite frankly, with some of the changes we've seen in the last five years with some of these guys taking advantage of the facade grant. I think that's been a big help. I've heard about it from business owners, that they've been, you know, they've been excited about that. So we're getting there, step at a time.
I'd just like to thank you, Justin. This is an excellent presentation, and I can tell that you've done a tremendous amount of research.
You should have seen the slides, Jennifer. It would have been beautiful if that...
Well, here's what I appreciate. I mean... The original paperwork that we got a month ago or so was this tiny little print, and you, even though the slides don't work, you've got some nice...
This is how I do it. See, I give you something awful, and then I put the pictures on there, and it's all better.
So I really appreciate it, but one thing I just really like about the facade grant and the kind of incentives that we're going for is that we specifically say that buildings of architectural significance should be restored as much as possible, and that that is incentivized because we have some beautiful buildings.
We have some gorgeous buildings. And I think that those buildings, when you look at it, they're, that's part of what you're trying to recapture. I mean, the whole point behind mixed use is that it is a village-style redevelopment or revitalization. It fits our footprint. It's the reason why it came up before, you know, before a couple of years ago, but now I think it's a time to probably address it and get it in here so that we can maybe really catalyze some development. And if not, at least we'll have some answers before they have questions.
The Mount Prospect photos were meant to kind of show an optimal example where somebody had done this on a pretty big scale.
Right.
Not necessarily suggest we needed to tear down and build the same thing here. I think we've got a lot to start with. And there are other people working on this as well, that the Business District Commission is involved, and Chamber, and MEDC, and others who have expertise or resources to bring to this, so it's not something that happens overnight. My observation with the seminars I've attended is this is a multi-year process to get this done in other communities, and we've got to start somewhere, and that's the purpose of this thing.
And I think when you look at Peoria Heights, we're a lot similar to Peoria Heights, and they have a good job of keeping the restaurants there, adding, and even the restaurants are block-off like in so many communities. And I think we could do that if we have some incentives and different things and have a plan, and I think this is a good start. Well, I mean, our restaurants seem to be doing good, and so I think that's important to remember. Thank you.